Good evening. Welcome to the Willoughby Eastlake Board of Education Special Meeting on December 19th. Mr. Tarnell, can you please call or roll?
Mr. Eady.
Here.
Mr. Roskis.
Here.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Here.
Mrs. Menzner.
Here.
Mrs. Baer.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Well, now move on to item 2A, Approval of the Agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam President, I move to approve the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Eady. Do I hear a second?
Madam President, I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. Menzner. Floor is open. Mr. Tarnell?
Mr. Eady.
Yes.
Mr. Roskis.
Yes.
Mrs. Menzner.
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman.
Yes.
Mrs. Baer.
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we'll now move on to item 3A in our work session. It is Communication Audit Debrief and Strategy Design Work Session. Wow, that took a minute to come out. So, we do have some things to discuss, but we do, and Mr. Murphy, thank you for coordinating, having your representative of Allerton Hill. I felt that we would start with the results of the audit and any recommendations that Allerton Hill has for us. So will you walk us through the audit really quick?
Sure. And Jennifer, if you want to.
We can tag team it.
Tag team it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll follow your lead.
Is that all right?
It is. I was just gonna say, because the meeting's being livestreamed and recorded, could we maybe have you?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
This way that your communication can be picked up as well.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
So I will start by introducing Jennifer Economist with Allerton Hill. She's our main point of contact, but one of the things that I like working with Allerton Hill on is we have a whole team of people that we work with. So, different people that specialize in different areas and help us with our social media, print, in all facets of communication. So, it's been a pleasure working with Jennifer and her team and, as such, you know, here she is, tag teaming this effort. So, it is typical effort by her and her team. So, Allerton Hill came in and did the audit of our communications and you want to just talk about?
Sure.
That process, because you certainly know it better than I do.
Yes, so when we typically start working with a client, just a little bit of background about Allerton Hill, we've been in business for over 40 years. We were founded by the gentleman named Steve Avakian and Joel Gagne, who's the current CEO, bought the company from him about 15 years ago. I've been with them about 12 years and before that I was a lobbyist with the Ohio School Boards Association, so, you know, I really appreciate working. I decided to leave politics and stick with working with school people because I love working with all of you and helping you make a difference on the local level. So, I've been with them about 12 years. We represent school districts all across the country, mainly in Ohio. We're based in Ohio. I live in Columbus, Ohio. I'm from Youngstown Boardman. Nick and I have that connection of being from Youngstown. But, you know, we really have a passion for public schools and we want to help you tell your story. So that's a little bit about Allerton Hill. The way that the audit works is we met with Chuck and his team and we have standard questions that we like to ask about how your day-to-day communications go. So we have a list of questions. You sent out a newsletter. Who's your local newspaper? You know, do you have social media accounts? So we have a list of questions that we ask and then based on the information you provide us, we apply best practices to say, oh, here, you're doing this all right? Like, for example, the monthly district email, amazing, what a great communications tool. You know, keep on doing that. So we'll give, you know, examples like that and provide recommendations around that. But then we did notice that we don't have a way to communicate with non-parents on a regular basis. So as you know, we're implementing a strategy around making sure that we reach those non-parents because they represent 75 to 80% of our population. So we want to make sure that we remain connected with them. So those are just examples of the things that we found from the audit. I told Chuck, both the audit and the communications plan are meant to be living documents because things change. You know, just think about two, now it's two years ago. I can't believe it, COVID. You know, it changed everything in the way that we communicate in schools. So we always preface it that it's a living document. In addition to that, there's a lot in there. It's, I think it's over 20 pages if I'm not mistaken. It's pretty long. And so what I tell Chuck is, you know, we got to make sure that we tackle those goals and those are up to you and what you guys. So we'll send you recommendations and you identify a couple that you see as goals that you want to attack, you know, tackle immediately. Then we get working on that because it could be overwhelming if we try to do it all at once. And then, as Chuck and I always talk about, you can't build Rome in a day. It takes a long time to build up communications. One example is, is we've, our longest client we've had is Mayfield, which is right down the road. And a lot of the strategies that they've implemented that have been consistent, that are recognized by the community, have been developed over many, many years. And so, you know, that's one of our goals, is Chuck and I sit down and say, what are these things that we can establish now that are sustaining, that can continue so that we build that credibility and those relationships with the community?
Thank you. So, you know, one of the things that I did is I looked through this audit and speaking with Jennifer is, just I highlighted some things that throughout this document that I thought were things that we should begin to focus on. You know, this year, we already have focused on and begun working on some of these things. As Jennifer said, for example, we are just about ready to get that first community mailer out. I think I've read it three times now. And so I know we're getting close since I've read it three times. And that'll be ready for you all to preview very soon. But, you know, Allerton Hill has taken over our social media at this point and so that partnership is critical that we've been working on. And I think one of the other things is the fact that, you know, it takes a little bit of time to put different team members together, working together. So, the melding of Allerton Hill with our current staff that we have working in communications, you know, I think that's going extremely well right now, but that doesn't happen overnight. That takes a little bit of time. So we're working on getting, understanding, you know, who does what and when and all that. So that's a big part of what we're doing. And then, let's see, I'm just gonna run through my notes here real quick. One of the things that Allerton's been doing is communicating a little bit through me, but with the staff. So I sent out in a recent weekly newsletter that I sent to the staff, asking them to help us out in terms of getting stories and how to do that and where to send that because they know best. You know, as we think about telling our story, it really comes from our staff. They're the ones doing the work and creating those stories and doing wonderful things with kids and, you know, I always say, I think, I think staff, teachers are just humble people by nature. You know, it does not come naturally for them to brag about the things that they're doing and that's really what we want them to do. Not brag, but you know, tell their story and it's, it takes time for people to get comfortable doing that. So we're working on that.
Can I say something real quick about that, Chuck?
Please. Yes.
And the reason we do that too, there's another benefit to that as we've been, especially as we've been doing social media takeovers for our clients, by asking staff to participate it, by asking them to be a part of the storytelling, they feel like they're a part of the communications versus it just being the people, the job of the people in this room, which I think is very powerful. And so you're creating a culture of communications and ownership around that too and a lot of pride. So I think that's another benefit besides us being able to tell our story with the public, then internally people feel like they're a part of our team.
Very good, thank you. And another piece that we're working on is the video to communicate and, you know, we, Steve had begun to check in with the soup and I am, you know, slowly trying to continue that. I'm a little shy on camera. But I am happy to say we have the December one just about ready to go, to be out tomorrow Wednesday. But we sucked in the building principles because, you know, they're less, they're a lot less shy than I am on camera. They're great. And so I'm looking forward to the community seeing that message go out and of course we had one in November, but working on that as well. Allerton Hill implemented a calendar, a content calendar, so that our, the communications team understood where and when and what had to go out. And so that certainly helps with the organization of things. So we're well on our way to that. Social media, Instagram.
Yeah, we started Instagram.
That we didn't have before, so that's another thing. So I just feel like we've done quite a bit of things to get started already in half a school year and still utilizing, and I'm really happy that we have internal staff as well as Allerton working together because I think we really get the best of all worlds that way. So that's been a huge thing. And then I was thinking in terms of, we talked about networking and key communicators and the first thing I thought of was our mayor's summit and what a great way that was to kick off that idea and then attending council meetings. So another way to reach out, our CAC would be another example of, you know, ways to incorporate some key communicators as well. So, that kind of gives you an idea of, I think, what we've started. Did I miss anything?
No, I think you nailed it. I do want to talk about how grateful I am to be able to work with internal staff because, you know, we work with all different size and shape school districts and some of them have communications people and some of them don't. I like working with communications people because you guys know your community better than anyone. So together we, you know, we know that, you know, we have a lot of experience, we've seen a lot of things. I just had something happen to me that's never happened before with a potential strike in a school board meeting, so if that, hopefully that'll never happen here, but at least I know, I've experienced it. But my point is, is that there's so much out there that we experience and that we see out there and then to meld that with your local knowledge of your community, you know them better than anyone, I think that makes a perfect team. So we're really appreciative of Laura and the work she's done. She's been a great partner.
So, okay, so a question that I have is there's so many different, like Facebook pages out there, like the one with the Willoughby Eastlake Board of Education. I'm not familiar with who the gentleman who's on there, but are those, are you gonna, how are you gonna bring those all together?
That's a great, excellent, excellent question. So, as a part of our, and we haven't gotten to that point yet, but that'll be part of our relationship as we work with you on social media. We do an audit and ask like, hey, what other Facebook pages are out there? What other Twitter pages? So we, we go ahead and we look and then we work collaboratively with you and we decide, okay, we're gonna shut down. If we're ownership or if we know if there's building pages, we'll say, okay, let's figure out a way collaboratively that we can work so that we don't have all these pages out there that are inconsistent in their posting. Because that, you know, impacts our reach and we want to reach as many people as possible. So there is a strategy about sunsetting those as necessary. It's a little bit different in every community, but we will definitely implement that as we continue to work together.
Okay, and are you gonna work with Chuck on the TikTok dances and stuff like that?
Oh gosh, don't.
Did I mention about being shy around camera?
We've got a couple clients that are doing reels. I'm like, let's get our, let's get a couple people on Instagram, then we'll worry about reels. But yeah, but that's the great thing about our company is we have people that are school, experts about schools. So they're always looking, they're looking at the algorithms, you know, so when we post and how we post is part of the process. And then also what kinds of things we post. You know, we knew from living through COVID, as we all did, what kind of information you need to post on social media and what we recommend you don't. So we work collaboratively with Laura and Chuck on, you know, let's stay away from more of the announcements and the bulletin board stuff because it doesn't get a lot of engagement. Some of the more controversial stuff that maybe the whole community doesn't see, but we need to communicate more targetedly to parents. You know, Facebook may not be the best place, but we will always be transparent. There's no doubt about that. But there's strategic ways to get that information out in an efficient and effective manner. So we're very strategic about that.
So I was just gonna ask about, I don't know, I know you guys started a couple months ago, but I think you've been phasing in and then also writing this plan and doing the analysis. So are you guys fully running right now our social media?
Yes.
Or is that something we do in partnership with internal staff? Or can you talk a little bit about like how that process would work? Like, do you create the content?
Yeah, that's a great question.
Or vice versa?
So we work, so Chuck sent a call to, I mean, a letter to staff and that's usually the way we prompt it. And we set up an email address to recommend to staff, hey, send your information here. Just give us, you know, you know, it's incumbent on staff to make sure that everybody in that photo is cleared, which everyone has a process with that and, and so we respect that. But that's, the onus is on the staff member to provide that, which works pretty well. But they send the information, they send the content, they send a couple explanation of what's going on. And then our social media strategist, her name's Heidi, she actually lives in Minnesota, which is very fascinating. So she takes the information and then she puts it on a calendar and it's a very transparent calendar that Laura and Chuck can see, so they can see as things post. A lot of it is evergreen and we want that on purpose. That way we can space it out to ensure that you get the most engagement as possible because as you know, the algorithms with social media, they change all the time. You just don't know what Meta's gonna do the next day. So our team's on top of it to ensure to post at the times where we get the most engagement. And so that's how, typically how the process works. In addition to that, we'll do special posts, like we're doing a staff spotlight. Those get a ton of engagement and we're gonna be doing an alumni spotlight where we encourage people to send information in and then we'll highlight them and we can, maybe we can make some articles out of it, but we'll definitely do a social media post. We like to do Throwback Thursdays occasionally, so at some point, once we get up and running a little bit more, we'll have a photographer come up here and then we have them go into like your vault or wherever you keep all your yearbooks and they'll take a bunch of pictures. And then from time to time, they'll send, they'll do the Throwback Thursdays. Those get a lot of engagement, people really like that. So yeah, it's an, it's ever-evolving strategy. Obviously getting your Instagram up and running is something that's, you know, gonna take a little bit of time. We've started that, we've launched that. And just to continue to ask staff to send things in and then also ask our community to like our pages as well.
So I was gonna ask about, since you're in Columbus, you said the social media person's in Minnesota, how do you generate the content? So like the videos, the photos, that kind of stuff? Is that something that we do here at the district?
Yeah.
Or you guys send someone?
Yeah, so it's a combination. We really want it to be organic and in real time. So we, you know, we ask staff, because a lot of them already have Twitter pages, they've got ClassDojo, so they're, they're sharing all this great stuff. And so this just gives them another outlet that's seen by the broader public. So we ask them to send things that are happening right there in their classroom that we can share, so it works that way. And again, it creates that culture of communication, so people feel like they're a part of it. And then from time to time, we'll come up and do videos if it's part of our strategy. I know Catherine's doing the monthly ones, which has worked out really well. I think those are perfectly authentic, you know, they, I think they really hit on the kind of messaging that we want from something like that. But if we wanted to do something a little bit more comprehensive, we have the means to have a professional videographer come in and do that kind of work as well. So it depends on what, what the project is, is what we do. So it's a collaborative, collaborative approach.
Okay, so like the, so you're saying like the check-in with the soup would be like Catherine or Laura?
Right, right, yeah.
Or someone would do that and then you guys would help to launch it and post it?
Right, exactly.
Do you use like buffer or something like that to schedule out the posts?
I, you know, I'm, I'm not the social media expert. I know they use some sort of, I don't think they use.
Scheduling tool?
Yeah, they use a tool. I don't think it's Hootsuite, but I know that they use a tool that's up there and, and it's, yeah, for everybody to see and that we can post in advance.
Sorry, I do marketing in my other.
Oh, good, I hear you. I might learn something to you about just the posting on social media, but yeah, glad we have our experts to help you guys.
So, if you were to, and this is always dangerous because it's just, it's an easier way to communicate, with the strategy and the recommendations that you've kind of garnished from, gained from the audit, how much of our communication is social media with Allerton Hill? How much of it is social media percentage-wise versus?
That's a great question.
Print media versus internal, external communication?
Yeah, that's an excellent question. So, as we've learned, and, you know, communications is always changing, especially with technology. So maybe 20 years ago, everyone got their information about schools from the local newspaper.
Yeah.
Well, we all know the local newspapers are dwindling. In fact, in Columbus, they've gotten rid of it. Their last day is January 17th, so it's called This Week and it's like Hilliard, Worthington, Dublin, all the, it's gone. Their last day is January 17th. So it's called This Week and it's like Hilliard, Worthington, Dublin, all the, all the, it's gone. And so as you know, that's just the way the world unfortunately is going. So what we've learned as we've done surveys with communities is that you need to be everywhere. Cause everybody gets their information in different places. So what we like to do from a strategy standpoint is, you know, come up with some core messaging, monthly, weekly. And then cross-market them through the different ways that people get information. That's why it was so important that we, you know, that we made the recommendation that we do a newsletter that gets mailed to residents. Because, you know, especially our generation, Generation X and up, we go to the mailbox all the time. We still, you know, read our mail. So we're doing a strategy to ensure those people that live in the community, in the school district, get information from us. So that's just kind of one strategy. But, but they'll get similar information that our parents will get. Because as marketing, as you know, you gotta repeat the messaging over and over again for people, for it to start resonating. So I'm gonna joke with Nick, like I'm gonna, Nick's gonna be writing very similar, you know, uh, stories, uh, you know, multiple times. Because school finance is very challenging and trying to sell, sell that financial story can be very challenging. So we're gonna repeat key messages from time to time to ensure that we're remaining transparent. That it's easy information that people can access and to ensure that they're, they're getting it in a consistent manner.
So I see, I love, I love a good schedule because one, it's, it's easy to kind of check out a list, hold people accountable, have conversations. So when I look at the schedule that's in the back, I'm seeing print media, the News Herald column, which I love. Because the News Herald is electronic plus some paper.
Right.
And I think it hits a broad audience. So with those stories, are, are those the feel-good for telling our story, stories? Is it interviews? Like how, what are we targeting that print media for?
Great question. A little bit of both. It depends. I really like to have a superintendent send out a column monthly, um, that's just more of a general theme. And we're starting to work on that as we're getting ramped up on. Cause like, for example, Chuck sends out a message in his monthly newsletter. We could do some kind of play on that that would go to the News Herald. Cause as we know from research, the people that read the newspaper are typically non-parents. I mean, that's what the research shows. And then in addition to that, um, as you can see, there's just multiple ways that we trade to ensure that we're getting that, that core monthly message out. It's a very macro, macro approach to communications. Because what I've learned too is you guys get busy. Things happen as you're, as, as, as things are happening. You know, we make sure and we partner with you to make sure all the trains leave the station on time. To ensure that, hey, we, we can't miss this news, you know, this newsletter article. And then in addition to that, you talked about interviews. We've set up several interviews with staff. We meet over Zoom, which I find to be very efficient. I used to go up and just spend a day and interview people, which works very well. But this seems to work even better because it's, it's much more convenient for staff, actually. You know, who would have known, you know, Zoom would be this integral part of our, our, our working relationship with schools. And so then they give us information and then our writer, Caitlin Hall, who is a professional writer. She used to write for Honda of America. She worked for Children's Hospital. She's our writer and she'll write the articles for you. And then we, we work with your staff to ensure everything's accurate. And then we work with Chuck and his team to, to execute and finalize it.
So one of the things that we've discussed as a board is trying to build bridges for two-way communication, which is an extension of this communication audit and strategy.
Right.
So when I think about that, we know that social media is, is a really important part of communication in our society, although not always accurate.
Right.
So my next question is, how are we using, so if I own a business, business A. I would reach out to my business partners and say, can I be a friend on your page? And share, so when I share, it shares to your page. And, um, that's a real, there's a lot of spin-off pages for Willoughby Eastlake.
Sure. Oh, yeah.
We have seven municipality pages and, and the alike. Okay. So my question is, is Allerton Hill helping us to take our main Willoughby Eastlake page? And to try to find inroads into those other pages? So that we're cross-sharing information there. One more question.
Sure.
And then what I also find, being a parent in the community, is a lot of people go to social media to ask questions. Which could have been a quick phone call to their teacher.
Oh, yes.
Or the building. So what a lot of thing that businesses are doing right now, I don't know if we're capable of it. Is to have that response reply. So if somebody's like, hey, do you know how to do A? And they tag Willoughby Eastlake, then we'd be able to reply with, here's your phone number. Or please contact this, or here's the website for your resource. Is that something that's?
Yes.
Anywhere?
Yeah, we monitor comments as they come in. So yeah, we make sure to work with Laura. And to get that, that, them to the right person. Exactly how you said to, hey, call this number. We don't want to get into too much of a dialogue. You know, exactly. But just getting them the information they need in a timely, yes, we do monitor the pages for that all the time. Yeah.
I think that's one thing I, I would love to see our social media used for because parents, they really should be going to the building level. But it's much easier to throw out a Facebook post.
Right, right.
And this way we could say, hey, you wanna look here, or this is where it's at, or go ahead and give us a call. I, I feel like that would kind of create a two-way conversation. And also support parents to feel more comfortable to engage us first versus the broader social community.
Right.
Okay.
And as you can imagine, that's a challenge everywhere. So.
I had another question about print unless, did you guys have questions? So you talked a little bit about, um, doing a mailer. And I wasn't sure if you meant like taking the electronic newsletter sort of like as is and then adapting it. And maybe trimming it down and then physically mailing it to?
That's exactly right.
People's houses. So, you know, in my experience, and I'll, I'll tell you, I work in digital marketing. And we do some print. Print is traditionally kind of a relatively expensive way.
Oh, yes, it is.
ROI, which I'm not saying if we can achieve it and do it, great. So how are we kind of making sure either through calls to action? Or getting people to do something to indicate that they're receiving this message, it's working. And then obviously that's gonna have to be an ongoing process. Like you said, a living document. So you're gonna have to monitor these metrics. How are we gonna do that to make sure that this is like a wise investment? And we're using the right channels, like going to people's mailboxes versus something like a, you know, we have the Willoughby Courier, the Eastlake Gazette. Things like that, that also get delivered to people's mailboxes and are something like, you know, a few hundred dollars for a column in there. Versus, you know, actually stamping and mailing even out of bulk, right?
Yeah, no, you're exactly right. And as school districts, we have limited resources. So that makes it even more difficult for us to measure the metrics. Because we don't have maybe what a large company would have to like check and making sure everything is getting where it does. So there are ways that we can measure it from a scientific standpoint. If we wanted to do a professional poll. Not gonna suggest that anytime now. But those, there are opportunities like that where you can get some information and data to see if it could be helpful. But one anecdotal, um, you know, we've been doing this for, for, for 40 years. The one place where you can have a message that's your own and unique, that is just strictly your school district, is still that mailed newsletter. It's still the gold standard to reach people in that way, um, especially a certain demographic that reads the mail. So for example, Chuck and I talk about Mayfield all the time. Chuck lives in Mayfield. Do you want to tell him the story?
You know, I am a parent in Mayfield and, uh, even when my kids went to school, which obviously they don't go to school anymore there. But, um, either way, I, I, I get that, they call your Mayfield schools, that mailer. It typically comes, I believe, three or four times a year in Mayfield. And, uh, I, it's just, I see it, I read it from cover to cover. And it's just great information and it's just so convenient. It's, uh, it's just a really great way to get information about the schools. And especially now that I'm not a parent in the schools, but I'm still obviously very interested in what's going on in the schools. That is such a convenient streamlined way for me to access information. And I guess I'm hitting that demographic. But, uh, yeah, it really works well.
So it's not typically then like asking you to like scan a code or go to a link or opt into a mailing list? Or hand raise in some way? So it's more like we're trying to measure like the general sentiment of the community?
Correct, yeah.
And like the overall feeling versus hard analytics, I guess.
Exactly. And, and again, it goes back to resources. School districts don't have the same resources of maybe a bigger kind, company to do that kind of stuff. But I'd love to talk to you if any suggestions. But that has not been our experience. But we do make sure to have information that has a general broader public appeal. Like for example, we're gonna have a feature on the senior night as a part of that. I think that's something the broad public's gonna wanna hear. We definitely want a message from both Chuck and Nick in every single one of our communications. Cause we want to make sure that, you know, they hear from the superintendent. And then we also want to consistently be telling our financial story. Cause that's something, especially taxpayers have something that they want to hear. They want to know about their return on their investment. And, and so those are just general broad strategies. And then in addition to that, as things are happening, like a strategic plan or anything like that, we make sure, you know, facilities, any kind of thing. Depending on what it is strategically, we will share that with the general public. We do special reports from time to time. You may be familiar with something called a quality profile. We do those with our districts, annual reports, financial reports. You know, it all depends on the situation and the resources that we have to execute.
Gotcha. So, so like someone like me, I live, obviously live in the district, all get that mailer as well? Or are you targeting a certain demographic?
We are working through that because, um, we have a budget and we want to live within that budget. So we're trying to figure out what those numbers are. And depending on what that is, is who we're gonna send it to. So we have to be strategic about that because we're basing it on our resources. Cause you have a lot of people here.
Oh, yeah. Yes, yes. And this is my last question.
Sure.
But I used to get the email newsletter all the time. I know I saw the last one on Facebook, cause I do follow our page on Facebook. So I saw it posted one night when I was going to bed and I read it. And I have not received it in my email. So I, I was just wondering, has something changed about the way we're doing email distribution?
No, it shouldn't have. Yeah, no, no, it shouldn't. We, yeah. But thank you for pointing that out. I, I would definitely talk to Laura about that because I don't think anything's changed on that.
Okay. I can follow up on that.
No, that's fine.
Just didn't know if there was like a new way to opt in or something that, um, was happening.
One strategy we were gonna work on though, is to have the general public, if they want to opt into it, so it's not just parents. If, if the general public, so we're working through if that's potentially logistically, you know, if we can do that. Cause again, like we say, everybody gets their information in different places. So we want to make sure we're everywhere where people feel comfortable. Cause you, you nailed it. It's about opting in, you know, that. And that's, that's a challenge, especially with our non-parents.
Thank you. Thanks for bearing with me.
No, I appreciate it. Great questions.
I think, oh, I just, I have one more thing.
Go ahead, cause I've got five.
I'm gonna forget if I don't say it. So Chuck, going back to, you know, the community partnerships that we're building with the mayors. And we'll talk tonight about other avenues for community sharing. Does Allerton Hill have the mayors and/or their secretaries emails? And are they sharing that information with them so that the cities can also distribute our information? Have we gotten there yet to kind of use them as an additional distribution pathway?
I have, but I have, Allerton Hill hasn't yet, but we will.
I just figured.
We started with the senior night, of course.
Yeah.
They helped distribute that information for us. So that kind of opened the door for us. But that was recent and will certainly expand.
And I, I don't think I'm necessarily saying it's better or worse to do it that way. It might be good for you to have routine intermittent contact with the mayors and/or other representatives from the cities. Just to kind of temperature check, like in that moment. But I was just seeing, cause the more I, I feel like we build that, that web of partners. It'll maybe help simplify how we get our message out by just kind of partnering with key places and times, right? So, I mean, cause they have an entire distribution list that we don't have.
I agree. Yeah, totally.
Okay.
That's actually good, cause, because of the budget, too, they can also disseminate some of this stuff. Okay, ready? Okay. So, um, first, controversial issues and topics and things like that. If people are either posting, I, I saw in here that, um, keywords and things like that. There's gonna be, um, monitoring for that kind of stuff. When controversial, hopefully nothing does come up. But if that does, how is Allerton Hill gonna handle or address those kind of things that may be popping up on some of these sites?
Great question. As you could imagine, we've seen a lot, especially during COVID. Which was just a roller coaster ride of just comments and, and Ron can tell you. Cause I used to work at, with Ron at Marion. We work directly with the school district on a post-by-post basis. Cause you know, since we are a public entity, people have First Amendment rights. So we have to be very careful about what we, you know, what we can delete, what we can hide. So we work directly with you to ensure that if there's something on there, you know, we address it, we take care of it. And then in addition to that, um, we have a guidelines that we provided, a template of guidelines that I believe that we've put up. So that it says, this is how you use the, the page. So if something inappropriate comes up or isn't related to the post, you, according to the guidelines, we can't hide that information. So we work collaboratively with you on those things.
Okay. Krista had brought up about, you know, the different modalities that you, that we have with the print, the videos and the different social media posts. About how much is print and online? I didn't write the rest of my question down. So, it, you put in here that it was gonna be an annual report on updating us with the data and stuff like that. Is there a way to get that more, like twice a year instead of just once a year?
It depends. It depends on how we decide what our metrics are. Cause every community is a little bit different. And Chuck and I have had conversations with that. Once we decide what we're going to, you know, cause how do you eat an elephant one bite at a time? So we've, we've been deciding on what our goals are right now to get off and up and running now. And then based on what those are, then we can decide what those metrics are to, to measure them. The gold standard that we utilize in public education to measure. And that's something that Mayfield does annually is we do something called a community satisfaction survey. Of course, there's a cost to it. Um, but you have a professional, typically a man by the name of Paul Fallon. Have you guys worked with Paul Fallon, Fallon Research?
I think we have.
Yeah. So Paul is a well-known pollster across the country, works primarily with, uh, local governments. Has done a lot of, um, public school, community satisfaction surveys. And then that gives you an analytical view of people's opinions about the, the schools. And we can ask lots of different things. My favorite question to ask is where do you get your information? Cause then that helps us target our messaging and who, where, what. And then you could break it down by demographics, by age groups, by zip codes. And then you could take a look at that. And then based on that information you get, then you can make those types of, um, of decisions. Now, in a perfect world, I would recommend that you do an annual community satisfaction, um, survey. Of course, there's a cost to that. So we work with you to ensure that it's something within your costs that we can do. A lot of people do two to three years, which I think is appropriate. But we've come across districts that said, oh, we did one 10 years ago. Well, that's, I mean, obviously things change. Or even anytime before COVID, things have changed. So, um, so that's something that could potentially be a way to measure, um, uh, you know, where, you know, how people are getting your information. In addition to that, you can do email surveys. They're not, they're not gonna be as scientific as, as a poll. Because what Paul does is he takes a snapshot of your community. So you get a general idea of how the general public, uh, uh, their opinions. If you do more email surveys, you're gonna get, people are opting in. So the people that are most interested, the most involved are likely gonna respond to that. And then that skewers like the general data of the entire community. So. I think it's a valuable tool. You can find out a lot from that kind of stuff. But it's not gonna give you that third party, you know, outside the bubble view of, of your community.
Okay. I, I, I wrote down recruiting, but I don't mean recruiting. But I know with my other jobs, we try to, there's so many different avenues people can go online to get this stuff. With us sending out flyers, newsletters and things like that. What are, is Allerton Hill gonna do to try to bring the, the wider community? Like let them know what other ways they can get in touch with us. These are other pages. Letting the community that typically doesn't follow us on Facebook or the other things to get, try to bring them in. So that way they're not just waiting for just the newsletter, but they can real-time see what else is going on. Is there a way that you guys are gonna try to bring the whole community more into?
Like cross-advertise. Like if you've sent out the mail, reference the Facebook page, things like that.
And then a part of something that we were gonna, more of a long-term strategy that's in one of the recommendations. Is to do some communications training with staff. So if you, typically, this is generally, if you ask people, like where do you get your information from the schools? I can tell you, except for Mayfield, where your Mayfield News is, which is what we, we will always strive for. That's where they get their, in that community where they get their information. But other than that, most communities, if you ask that question, they say from talking to parents and talking to teachers. So getting key communicators up and running so that they're informed, so that they're talking to their friends. And they're telling people about what's going on. That, that grassroots, one-on-one relationship building with the city, uh, with staff. Making sure that they know what's going on and making sure that they feel like they're a part of things. That's another way we get, hey, you know, we sent out a newsletter. Or do you know we do a monthly newsletter? Or do you follow us on Facebook? That would be all part of our strategy to get people to help us. Cause again, communications needs to be more than just the people in this room.
Okay. Well, that's a good segue for the next question.
I love these questions, by the way.
So we are in the process of this community advisory committee. To try to bring the whole community together. How will you guys work with that advisory committee?
Well, it depends. Um, I would work with Chuck and just figure out a strategy based on what the purpose of. Cause every, everyone has a different purpose and what their goal. because every, everyone has a different purpose and what their goals are with a group like that. So I would work directly with Chuck, get a little bit more information about what that is. And then based on what the end goals are, I would partner with you guys based on best practices to, to communicate and to work with you, whatever your goals end up being. And everybody's a little bit different. We've worked on, you know, we've worked with districts on building up facilities advisory committees. We've worked with districts on financial committees with the treasurers. It all depends on what your goals are and what the goal of that group is that we can help promote that.
That was all I had.
Great, great questions. Other questions? Okay. We really appreciate you coming to kind of answer some questions. Also saved Chuck 27,000 emails just knowing you were coming tonight. So much appreciated.
Yeah, I appreciate your time. It's so great to meet you in person. I really, and I do, I do. I mean, even though we do a lot of our communications via Zoom, I really do like to come up and get out to the districts. And I work with Richmond Heights, Mayfield, so Ashibula, so I'm up here quite a bit. So, so I'll take advantage of that as well, so.
We appreciate you and your team's efforts. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. So we have the audit. And then Chuck, at the end of it, there's already a schedule. Like I said, I love a good schedule.
I knew you would.
That schedule is something that's housed in central office and I'm assuming is delegated accordingly. And your team as a whole is striving to kind of make sure these milestones, timeline milestones are met. Can you just ensure that in your weekly superintendent updates, you're kind of just reporting out on the progress? I think that'll just eliminate us being like, hey, let's talk about it again and again. You can just kind of keep us up to speed?
Sure, it's a great idea.
Okay, just put it in there and just you can check it off the box. And then we have everything we need here, which I think is a really good, if we could all turn to the back of the packet, I think it'll be worth kind of keeping open as we segue into the next portion of our communications conversation. So, everybody, yeah, everybody's there. Okay. So one of the other things that we, I think I've seen throughout this audit is what is your brand? What is your story? And that's constantly evolving and developing and clearly should be in the hands of our administrators. And where we as a board come in, and this is just me speaking out loud in general terms, is we as a board should be checking the administration to ensure that our communication strategy and where we're driving is aligned with that strategic plan, that five-year strategic plan. And I think that's one thing I'm going to, as a board member, want to constantly keep bringing up is we have a strategic plan in place. How are we working to achieve it? And if we're spending money on communication, I would like to see, like you said, that ROI, is that communication helping us drive towards building better partnerships and trust with our community so that we can achieve those strategic goals that we, we put forth to the community? We want to hold ourselves accountable to. So we're not telling the story, but we're helping the story navigate towards some outcomes. Does that make sense? When we look at that part, we as a board do, we, we are a liaison in communication. That's, I sent an email out on December 3rd and kind of summarized since January of '22, we've had many conversations about communication as a board. And I kind of threw everything, I take a lot of notes. Also from our retreat, board retreat on April 23rd, we talked a lot about communication, took a lot of notes. So I emailed all of those things out to ensure that Mr. Reedy and Mrs. Schatzman were kind of up to speed on all of those conversations. This was not a document to say how we're going to take action. It was more a summary of all of our ideas. One of the suggestions that I threw forth in the email was we could walk through this really quick because we've not had opportunity as a group of five to strike ideas or add ideas. Not discuss them, not develop them, but at least get one document that says, hey, as a board, we're driving towards exploring these ideas as a group of five right now. And I think you said it, a lot of people have said it, this is not to be done in one false loop. This is a long-term vision that we're going to slowly incrementally work, but recalibrate to ensure it's helping us drive towards our strategic goals. Okay? So does everybody have that up? And Nick and Chuck, I know you don't have it, but it was on purpose. It was for us to get on the same page. And then from here moving forward, we'll kind of keep it clean. You got enough on your plate since the holidays. So if everybody has the emails.
You keep turning it towards you.
Yeah. Jamie and I are sharing a computer. Okay. So if we go down, some of the questions that we had been asking ourselves all year is, why do we want to communicate? How can we create meaningful and impactful communication? How will we facilitate a communication plan as a unit, as a board? How do we build sustainable approaches to this? How do we streamline and make decisions and take action with our administrators? What are measures of success? How can we create a precedent for involvement with our district and community? All this stuff, that's all in the email. Those are some lingering questions that we still need to answer. Areas for consideration was strategic plan review and alignment. We've spoken a couple of times as a board about looking at our strategic plan and becoming experts with regards to that and ensuring that our communication and our action as a board is driving towards meeting those goals. Is this something that we as a board still want to keep as a high-impact area of focus with communication? Does anybody want to strike it?
You're saying aligning with strategic plans specifically, not the prior questions?
No, those were questions that we were asking ourselves. And then some of the answers were, we should look at the strategic plan and do we need to recalibrate it this year? And should we be communicating or working our communications to align to those? Like if we say we're going to do one-to-one technology, like we did, then how are we reporting out on that so the community can hold us accountable?
And this is a question for the district, not board-specific, just to clarify.
So it would be for us as a board, is this something that we want to work with our administrators to make sure we're doing? So do we as a board want to look at the strategic plan, look at the communications audit and decide, is the strategic plan good now or does it need to change? So keep it or strike it?
Keep it.
Keep it, keep it.
Keep it.
Thank you.
Okay. And once again, now that in itself is a whole nother meeting just for that topic. And that's going to take actionable steps. Okay. So the next one was board evaluation and goal setting. One of the things that we've discussed as a board was setting an evaluation for ourselves, set goals for ourselves, hold ourselves accountable. Not just come to meetings and, and work with our administrators, but have a forward progress as a board. Now, I've spoken with Mr. Tarnello and Mr. Murphy. They've never had a board that's done one. And I've talked to a lot of other boards. It's not common, but it's not unusual. This would be something that's brand new for our district and brand new to us. And we would have to do some research into it. But I feel it might stand us up in a good place. I think that's why we discussed it before, to support onboarding a new superintendent. So is this something we want to keep or do we want to strike?
So my initial, oh, go ahead. I was going to say, my initial thought is potentially to strike it for now, but it's a good idea to have in the future. We have new board members, potentially the board could change, potentially get in November. We have a superintendent search coming up and I think we need to focus on that going forward for the time being.
To kind of piggyback on that, I was going to suggest maybe tweaking it to prioritizing as a board, which I think will come naturally out of the superintendent search and the work we're going to do with a firm to help us figure out what it is that we want. So I would make it more about prioritizing and then have the evaluation of whether we're aligning to those priorities and moving forward on them be like phase two, sort of like what Stacy was saying.
Okay.
Does that fit with what you're saying?
Like we want to, but do we have scope and time to do it right now? But it's something that's still important.
Yeah, I don't know what, what exactly we'd evaluate on right now until we say these are our clear priorities and are we marching towards them?
Got it. So we're going to just table this one, right? Table, question mark, and then maybe after the superintendent search, right? Complete.
We can re-discuss it at that point?
Yeah. So we'll just kind of put it until then. Awesome. Okay. So one of the other things that we have a board has discussed is board communication and how we report out. And we've discussed this a few times, and that is in board meetings. Let me put in context. When you go to a city council meeting, each member of city council kind of specializes in an area, whether it's parks and recreation or, you know, buildings or I, I'm not even going to pretend to be an expert. But they have a specific area and that board member is the point of contact for it. They do the work, the work on it, they partner with the administration, and then they report out on it. And it kind of streamlines the administration, who they're working with on what. Now, I know we've talked about this a couple of times, just throughout, based on what I wrote down as areas of interest on who could be a part of it. The ones that we had talked about on April 23rd at our board retreat were academic achievement and wellness, policy, communication, finance. And then one that we just added was legislative, just in general, legislative issues. So that would give us five areas. And then we as board members would be a specialist in one and we report out on those. And sometimes there's something to report and sometimes there's not. Is this something that we want to take action on and keep? Or do we want to table this one and kind of strike it for the future?
I think we should keep this one.
I think we should keep it.
I agree.
Now, I did put ideas out there to partner two board members within an area because, you know, life happens, right? And it would also, once again, streamline things for Nick and Chuck to know who they should be pulling in when they're working on different things. So they don't have to, they would still keep the entire board informed, but they would work closely with those individuals. So I think I put down academic achievement and wellness, myself and Erin, policy, Stacy and Jamie, communication, because of the communications committee, John and Krista, finance, John and Erin, and then legislative, Jamie and Stacy. So we'd each have two. Is anybody like, whoa?
No, I would just want to make sure that obviously these would be sort of the point people, although clearly like major decisions, different things, like you'd be not only reporting out, but it would be like sort of recursive that we could make, we could still make recommendations, ask questions about those areas, still have open-lined communication to our administrators outside of our scope. It's just primarily we'd be ultimately responsible for keeping the board informed about those areas.
I think it's, this is a good way also to maybe break up some of the work. I mean, you know, questions that people have instead of having one person.
Yeah, like responding, yeah. Responding to either public comment or emails or that kind of stuff.
Which goes into the next one. We've talked about communication and splitting it up amongst the board as a whole versus the board president. And that would give us, you know, when it comes to policy, obviously Stacy, you had met with Mr. Murphy previously. The next time that were to come up, you two would meet. And then you two would be reporting out to the board, kind of thinking with a board perspective to kind of come prepared to answer questions that the board generally answers or asks.
I mean, I think it's good because then no one person is also acting alone. There's like a check and balance of, you know, two heads are coming together and makes it really probably transparent for all of us and keeps our heads all focused on the strategic plan, which is also important.
And I think these do tie into areas within our strategic plan and would allow us as a board, it's very hard to be a generalist as a part-time contributor to the district like we are. I mean, we rely heavily on, on Chuck and Nick. And at times we, we burden and stress Chuck and Nick with wanting, I mean, I think we're a very engaged board, which is a good thing, but we need to clean up how we engage. Okay. So this will be something that maybe we need to put on an agenda in the very near future, clean up, sync up, and then help support Chuck and Nick understanding what our expectations are.
Yeah, and I feel like that could also go with revising our agenda in the new year too. It's like if we do this early on, then we could maybe streamline our agenda to.
And this is, and this is something that would require us to make a, a board policy change as well. Because isn't it in the board where it says how the president is the primary contact? Would this change that policy then?
So that policy is specifically for like news media and, and a bunch of other things. And there, there is a implied precedent that it needs to be the president. Now, the reason why this last year was conducted in the manner as it was with me being the point of communication is that's what the board agreed upon at the beginning of the year to keep it clean while we were a very new board. And as we've evolved and we all have an interest in communication, I think we're kind of all looking and leaning towards dividing that up. It really, it's a lot for the board president to respond to all the emails and to be the only person. You know, if we all could share that and maybe respond, especially when it's in an area where you've had focus. I know, I'm sorry, I can't like.
Oh, I'm just trying.
We need more of a concave. I think, once again, I think we should put this on an agenda and discuss it thoroughly. And then really look at those policies and see if, if changes need to occur. I think this would be more delegation of work. And then in the board discussion portions of our agenda, it would be, you know, do you have anything to report out, Erin and Krista on economic? Nope, nothing. And then Stacy and, you know, policy. And if so, then those board members should have previously coordinated to get information from our administrators to bring. So it kind of takes some of that reporting off of them and puts it on us.
And I know we have talked about, I think it was last Monday, we had talked about an email that would come into one email address, but then disseminate amongst all of us. Is that kind of, would that also tie in with this?
So right now you have to, if you want to email the board, tag all five of us. It was just an idea. We can do what's called a distribution email where it's like board members at Willoughby's Lake Schools, whatever it may be, the handle. And when you email that, it automatically copies whomever you put on that distribution list. So that would prohibit, it would help whomever is the president or whoever responds. If they're incapacitated, on vacation, or whatever it may be, or not available, the board would have seen the email and didn't have to wait for the president to copy you on the email. And everybody would get everything in real time equally at the same time. So maybe an email comes through and John's like, you know, I'd really like to respond to this one. Okay, great, John, go ahead, please respond. And he would coordinate and respond accordingly. Versus now it comes into me, I receive it, I can't talk to everybody about it. I just like, I literally can't. So one person has to respond and I coordinate with Nick and Chuck or whomever to, to generate the response and then CC the board. But sometimes you're not seeing the email until I forward it or respond to it. And I don't like that delay in communication.
Right. And where are we with that, Chuck?
With, what specifically?
The we school board is into that one. I thought we needed you to set that up.
We had decided we were going to do it first.
Okay.
Yeah. Chuck's poised and ready to go. He's had the conversations. It's just merely, do we want to or do we not want to?
Should we address it in the meeting when we organize rather than have to decide now?
I think that's, we'll have a meeting on it and just knock it all out there. It'll give time people, people time to think about it. It'd also Chuck to Nick to kind of marinate it too, to think about different angles to support or maybe to not support. Okay. So we'll keep that one. I think this is kind of a, a very important one. Maybe like if we're going to prioritize, maybe this one's first. Okay, I'm going to put that as first. Okay. One of the other things that we had discussed often was board meetings, frequency and purpose. A lot of boards have routine meetings and special meetings every month. So they, they have a, a routine, regular meeting, then they have a special meeting. And that is always a standing working session. It's something that we've discussed. Now, we have a lot of meetings up and coming with the superintendent search. So I think it's just for scheduling for our sakes. How can we get ahead and schedule things? I mean, we sit down and we're like, nope, not this day, this day, not this day, I can't make it this time. That, how can we be a little bit more streamlined with our approach to meetings? I think is why I put it on there because it was mentioned many times. So it's just something we want to keep, strike, discuss.
I think it's going to be hard to streamline because it's going to depend on what's coming up. We can't, I think we can plan when we're going to have the superintendent meetings. I think we just have to figure it out as, as it goes.
I know a lot of these search terms that I talked to said they would, once selected, they would come in and they would have us sit down with all of our calendars and they would like plan out a schedule. So we probably would be heavier during the interview process and that kind of stuff. And we might sometimes need two or three meetings in a week. I hate to say that, but I think that's going to be the reality.
That's already happened, yeah.
So I, I think we'll kind of get a schedule at least through like Q1, some of Q2. And then maybe we could revisit this later depending on.
Yeah. I think too, onboarding the new superintendent, that individual may need maybe more frequent encounters with the, with the board as a whole, right? Okay. I always feel like Chuck, we adore you, you're doing a great job. But talking about just like, yeah, Chuck's gone, new person's in, like in hypotheticals, I apologize.
Not at all.
Okay. Okay, so that one's tabled. So board communication vehicles, obviously there's that. The other thing is too, is voicemail. So I want to, I'll throw that into that meeting. I would love to have a phone number at the board office where voicemails go and then they can forward out in an email, which we should be able to coordinate. So that's not coming, I have a Google Voice account set up right now. And then I have to share that and send it to, it's just, I would like to not, I think we as a district should have a phone number for the Board of Education, right?
I'm looking at the person who probably will do that and I saw her shaking her head, yes. All right, we're in good shape.
And then that generates an email recording of it so that it gets shared with the board once again. Because if somebody calls right now, nobody else knows that they called until I share that. And I'd prefer it to be more in the moment. Okay. So the other part was too, was community outreach. Now, I know there's an appetite from our community partners to have us be more present. We've talked about this a few times, is kind of breaking up the municipalities and being, I don't know whether they're a liaison or the representative from the board that works with that city. What are your thoughts about maybe incorporating? What are your thoughts about maybe incorporating that into the conversation with us? Like having a specific domain as a board to report out on?
Yeah, I think addressing that at the same time would be good.
Yeah, maybe to report out on, but maybe not. I think it says attending meetings, word events, that might be a little difficult with everything else that we have going on at the school board.
Yeah, I don't want to like over commit and have the community expect something and then we under deliver. I'd rather like over deliver on what they're expecting. But I do think it's good to kind of make sure the lines of communication are open and kind of like Alarson Hill was saying, you know, getting them to want to share our stuff. But I don't know that it always needs to be as formal as like going to a meeting. When I went to the Eastlake City Council, for instance, they were like, oh, you can send us emails, like here's our cards. So I think there's a lot we can do in just developing kind of informal relationships if we're assigned to, you know, whether we give them a certain email or one of us is assigned or whatnot.
Or even let them know, look, if you would like us to be there for this particular meeting, because sometimes, you know, they don't always have anybody that shows up at their city, how all meetings are counting or anything. So just letting them know who is assigned to each location and say, look, if you would like for them to attend or like for us to be present there, this is who you would contact.
I think there's a great example of... So I'm going to say it's from Eastlake with the sign with Mike Semick.
Semick, yeah.
Yes. I think that's, this is, this is why I think we put it on there was Mike emailed you and said, hey, we have an idea, we need some help building a new sign, would your students be interested in it? And that's, I think, more where this was the spirit of, not necessarily going out and being every month, but being that point of contact. So if the city does have some level of interest or partnership that they want to kind of maybe explore, that board member could be their point of contact.
I think the point of contact is a good idea and maybe some, you know, more informal communications. Now, you know, like Erin said, occasionally, you know, if we did go to the meeting or if they did invite us to a meeting just to give an update if they wanted that or something like that, we could do that too, but maybe not every month or...
Yeah. Awesome. I put over committee and not over commit. Okay. So maybe we can discuss that at that same meeting. I think it just makes sense to also be local where you live, right? So it's really close if you were to go. Or you might, like I run into people in Willowick all the time so that really that informal, hey, like I saw three council members this weekend just out and about. So they would know that I'm their point of contact, I live in Willowick. And I think we have the cities pretty well represented. We're a little heavy.
You could change mine to Willoughby Hills since that's like two miles from my house.
I just kind of threw out randomness, so we can just do that. So like hills.
Well, we can figure it all out.
Yeah.
Another meeting, right? The specific city.
So I'm just going to put this together for the proposal.
Stacy and I live in the same city too, so we'll have to figure that.
We can fight about it.
Rock, paper, scissors. Salt, salt, arcanes.
I also work for two of the cities. So this is another reason I think we're looking at Willoughby Hills.
I will figure it all out.
I was trying to give you a separation between that and then other, yeah? So when you're there, I don't want you wearing a board hat, right? That's kind of a lot to ask. Okay, so this is one worth exploring, maybe a small portion of. And then these are, once again, there's tons of ideas that were on here. Okay. So that was everything. So we know what we're going to keep, we know what we're going to strike. So ultimately, just to review, we're keeping board meeting agenda, really looking at who's going to cover what, looking at who's going to represent and be maybe a point of contact. And the rest of it is something that we'll leave for later development. I'll send out a summative email, just kind of cleaning that up. It will not be today. It'll be sometime before Friday, to be really honest. So, okay, any other questions about the board's direct communication or our involvement with communication? Okay, I had one more question and this is, it was in the audit. So hold key communications group meeting, which I think probably transitions really nicely into our community advisory committee, but also what does that mean from our administrators? What, what were we thinking with the communications group? What would that group be comprised of or who?
Well, really what, you know, Jennifer had talked about at the beginning, that, you know, we all want to have a little bit of responsibility for telling our story. And is any kind of key communicators that we have that might be able to get, once the story's told, to get it out to people that can reach various groups, that would be the important piece. It could look differently depending on what we, we think we want it to look like. You know, we had talked about it could be mayors, the, you know, the councils, the cities, could be aspects of our school district. So we'll want it to be pretty well cross-represented so that we're getting the message out as far-reaching as we possibly can. Do you want to add anything to that?
No, that's perfect. Yeah.
Okay, and I think that's a, if we're comfortable, we've kind of covered the communication audit and strategy design. We kind of know where we're going strategically as a board. Do we want to move on to item 3B or is there other discussion regarding communication? Thank you very much for coming. You as well, thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer, very much.
Bye. Okay, so we'll move on to policy 9140, community advisory committees, which is item 3B. John, take it away.
Sure. So we did have the first reading in November and I just wanted to kind of go over the policy to see if anybody thought there should be any changes to the language of it. I thought it was in line with what we were aiming towards, but I just wanted to check with the rest of the board.
So just high level, once again, this would be a board committee.
Correct.
Okay. And obviously you sit on it, so John. And the chairperson would have to be elected by the body, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and the board has no say in that? That would just be the body of people whom come together.
That would be, that would be the board, yeah, I mean, the committee that was selected the chair.
Okay. Okay. And, and then it says the structure and organization of an advisory committee shall be determined by the board as appropriate to the assignment. So I think that's kind of maybe where we're at is what is the structure and organization? But Jamie, you were going to say something.
We do have, I mean, I did review kind of that structure that we were looking at. So I don't know, was there any, did anyone have any suggested changes to that proposal? I know I did send out that proposal at some point. I don't know if you recall it, but, and then I read it at that meeting. So it was going to be the committee would, it would have a chair and there'd be 12 core appointed members and those would be appointed by the Board of Education. So those would be two-year term members. Then there would be two students, those would be recommended by the principals, those would be one-year terms. There'd be two ex officio members, so superintendent, Board of Education representative, those members have no voting rights. And then there would be on a co, beyond a chair, there would also be a co-chair in case the chair can't be there. And then also a secretary, two minutes and that type of thing.
So would those people apply and then we would consider applications and appoint them? Or would we just select people or how do you?
I think, I think it would probably be best to have some sort of application process. I mean, I don't, I really don't want to leave anybody out. I mean, and right now, we only have about maybe five active members. So we definitely do need some more participation.
So we can potentially work on a kind of outbound communication to make sure everyone is aware of this opportunity, since it's a two, you said two-year term?
Yes, for the 12 core members, it would be a two-year term.
We do have a standing list of individuals who had applied the first time for the initial inception idea. And I think it would be best to send to all of them, like, hey, this is actually happening, this is when it'll start, we need 12 people. The ones that have worked on it thus far would stay, correct?
Right, and then I would, I mean, we, I would also, I mean, I have their emails. So, you know, when we do send out that communication, I can make sure that we share it with them that, you know, so to make sure that they're welcome to, to continue or apply again.
But the structure of the way the committee that did exist ran is different than this structure, correct?
Yeah, the original, well, it was, it kind of went through several iterations, as you know. So the prior structure was an administrative committee. And this would be moving it to, towards a board committee.
So then all of the meetings of the new committee would be public meetings versus the other ones were not necessarily public meetings?
That's why the decision was made then to make it a administrative so that it wasn't subject to public. We thought that maybe that would be easier. But at this point in time, if they're representative of the community, we want the community to have the opportunity to hear what they're discussing.
So it would be held somewhere just like this where it could be, people could, they would have potentially an audience that would attend but not participate or have voting rights? Is that, okay?
And have, has there been any discussion as to where those types of meetings would be held? Like, would they be held here at the board? Would it be held outside of the school district's property?
I imagine since it is a board committee that they would be held here.
I think in...
Most part, I mean, we can't, there is a possibility to have a board meeting or a board committee meeting at another location, it just has to be specified and published.
Because the reason why I was asking, because I'm thinking that, you know, with a lot of the schools being open for different events, having it maybe at different locations allows for people within that community to be able to attend and by rotating it.
Right, I think that's a good idea. I mean, that's something we could look into. I'm not, not opposed to that.
Did you say it was one board member and the superintendent? Or is it two board members and the superintendent?
This would be, so the ex officio, there would be a total of two ex officio members and one would be the Board of Education representative and then one would be superintendent.
Okay, so do we have to designate that during the organizational meeting as well or is it just?
Since I think it would go on this, would it go on the second reading in January, Nick? Okay, so we would still have to adopt, vote on the policy and then we'd have to...
A point after.
Okay, a point after.
Seek out additional members and then...
And that would be for a two-year term also or would it be one year since ours, our seats rotate probably?
Well, those, those are for the duration of the term. So however long...
Gotcha.
Right, you're on the board or Chuck or his successor, maybe is, you know, works for the district.
For the board members, it could be annually, like every January you could...
Like a liaison kind of position.
Select a liaison if you so chose.
I'm not volunteering, that was not me volunteering, that was me clarifying, sorry.
Noted.
For the record.
A really, I think we have some big conversations that our district needs to have and we know we need the community to help us have those. And I think this is going to be a really good bridge to those. And I love that we're going to stand it up. And I think the hardest thing, and we all know it, is to keep engagement. But I think it also says in here that the board would assign the topics of discovery for them. So let's say we wanted them to know what the children's favorite color was in the district, this is just for a simple example. They would be tasked with then figuring out how they would go about retrieving, extrapolating, reporting out on that information. So it's their job, but we give the work to them.
But at the same time, we, there's also kind of a feedback, I guess, so that, you know, there would be suggestions, I would hope, from the committee back to the board and then so it would be, is figuring out.
I think the initial workload has to come from us first.
Sure, that probably makes sense.
You said you base this off, I think you said like Westlake maybe or?
Right, we, we base the structure and, yeah, the initial policy on Westlake's format.
Do you have an example of like a topic, just so I can get my head around like what level of topic that they?
I can't, I can't think of one right off the top of my head, but...
You can follow up.
They, they have a website with like actually a list of the topics they've covered.
I'll check that out, thank you.
I can probably forward it to you if you want.
I think they're a really, here's the website, so... They've been doing it for what, 40 years now?
Right, it's been a long established committee.
I don't think so, they, it's all, it's all on there.
Can you email that out?
Well, John actually already has it all. Can you just re-forward that? Because John, this, all this legwork was done prior to your appointments, so I'm sorry. So we'll make sure it gets to you.
I think I said it on the meeting where you guys actually talked about this. Sorry.
Welcome. So are we then comfortable with the language to place this up for a second read in January?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Woo-hoo, we're making record time on topics tonight. Yeah, now that I've said that... Are we ready to move on to item 3C, superintendent search, initial strategy design session? Ms. Schatzman?
Thank you. I think that we're getting passed it or are they already here?
They're already in the...
Oh, my goodness.
I'm in a folder.
Thank you.
No, thank you, you put it together. And Mr. Charnello for printing.
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Charnello. So I kind of sent this out in advance and hopefully you guys had an opportunity to take a look at some of these things. There was a last-minute submission from a search firm, so if you did not have a chance to look at that one, that was the HYA proposal that is in here and is at the back. So essentially, what I did in gathering information going into this meeting was to reach out to search firms both in Ohio, local to us, as well as firms that were more national in scope and headquartered in other locations. And I reached out to them and not only requested proposals and information about their fee structure, but I also, with everyone I could connect with, which is everyone on this list except for Mac and Jake, we did not have a chance to connect. I had detailed conversations, some of them as long as an hour, some of them closer to 20 or 30 minutes. So we talked in depth about where we were in our process basics, about, you know, this is when our last superintendent moved on, we have an interim superintendent through this date, we are looking at really getting underway with our search in 2023. And then here is what our board has done so far. Every single firm and every single person I talked to said, it is a very competitive market right now. There are, as we all know, lots of people are leaving education as a profession, unfortunately. There are many, many districts in Ohio, notably this morning in the News Herald, I think I forwarded you all an article, that Riverside, which is our very close neighbor and not quite as large as us, but similar in scope, has six schools of their own, is looking for a superintendent and kicking off a search. So there is really an urgency in making sure that we're getting to market so that people know this is our timeline, this is our search, so that folks who are able to make a change in the next few months would consider our district if we can get out there and say, these are the characteristics we're looking for, this is what we're trying to do. And if they have an interest, they know, okay, well, I'm not going to commit to something else if I'm interested in Willoughby's Lake. I do think it was echoed by everyone that we have a desirable district, this is somewhere that people would want to come. We have, although we have things and places where we're improving, there are lots of great things about Willoughby's Lake and I, we, we have the ability to really attract someone who will help us take our, I think, schools to the next level and engage our community in the ways that we've been talking about. So as I went through these conversations, again, the idea is that we would select a search firm as soon as possible and then they could really lead us through a lot of these steps. I put this together in that email that I sent you, but essentially, step one is us narrow it down and then invite to a public meeting, ideally our first meeting in January, which I know is organizational, but I think this is a priority for us to include, is we would invite them in, we would give them opportunity, 15 to 20 minutes to present, and then we would ask them a list of questions that we might have as a board. And then we would make a decision, hopefully that night after we got our answers according to, and again, I get you guys a proposed rating scale, that was my personal opinion. I would love your feedback. Again, we can strike questions, we can add questions, we can clarify them. But essentially, I'd like us to have some kind of semi-scientific metric where we all get the ability to weigh in, to say, these are, this is the firm that we think will help us. I think everyone stressed that this is going to be one of the most, if not the very most important decisions that we will make as a board. So we want to make sure that we are thorough in who we choose to partner with on this area. As you guys go through these proposals, and again, I tried to put it together in this As you guys go through these proposals, and again, I tried to put it together in this first document, the search firm summary, where I just tried to summarize, I gave you a link to their website, where they're located, a direct link to their proposal, which Mr. Tarnello was so kind to put them all in here, any additional materials for review, and then the fee structure that we'd be looking at. As we go through here, I think fundamentally, we're going to want to make a decision about, is it important to us to have a firm that is local to Ohio, truly knows without coming in, interviewing us, meeting us, this is what Willoughby Eastlake is about, this is what the people who live there are like? Or are we comfortable and think it's important to really do a broader, more national search and bring in a firm who maybe is not as familiar? Potentially, they have people who work in Ohio, but presumably they're not as intimately connected as, say, one of our local ESCs. And bring them in and let them through their fact-finding process as they help us develop a candidate profile, get to know us, and then use their expertise and their systems to help us match with the best person. So I think that's one of the things we're going to see when we're looking through here. As you go down the list, we've got ESC of Western Reserve, Dan Wilson, we all know. He came and did some training with us. You know, by his own admission, he is not a search firm. He has done recruiting before. He's very well-networked. In terms of process, again, you'll see from the proposal, not quite as formal. In terms of step-by-step, here is the flow chart of exactly what we do in this order. His appeal is more of, I know you guys, I'm intimately connected in your area, I'm familiar with you. I can help with some of those intangibles to match you guys to the best profile. In terms of recruiting, he does what he calls more of a softer recruiting. So while he will go out there and call people, and he's not prohibited from doing that, like the OSBA, for example, where they cannot actively recruit from any of their members, he does sort of rely on people to self-select more because he has a very detailed and developed profile. When we look at someone like Finding Leaders in partnership with ESC of Northeast Ohio, they are truly a search firm that goes out and recruits. They're calling people, they're going down their network, they're actively recruiting. In this particular case, we've got, through our partnership with ESC, I just did want to highlight that we would have some of that cost subsidized on there, and we've got their whole proposal and process there. I also sent you guys an additional email with some information. School Leadership Connection is also a division of an ESC. They're the Summit ESC. I know those of you who went to Capital Conference, we heard some positive feedback from other boards. We do have their proposal as well. Again, similar, similar in the kind of knows the local area, although I would say they are not in Lake County, so we could weigh that as well, but I had a great conversation with them about their process. Again, and the ESCs are a little bit limited when they're talking about their partner network, so they will publish this to their membership. They're not going to actively, unless, you know, let's say we're talking about Chuck, right? So if there's another district, they're not going to call Chuck if he's also a member of one of their ESCs and say, hey Chuck, I really want you to take a look at this job, on and on and on. But if Chuck were to pick up the phone and call them, they would say, let me tell you all about this job and feel like, see if you're a fit, and would then recruit from there. So it's a little bit of a subtle difference. We don't have that same situation with the Finding Leaders in partnership with the ESC because they are subcontract, essentially work like a subcontractor, so they're a private firm. K-12 Business Consulting, this company was started by a treasurer, and they do have a great repertoire of searches with treasurers, and they've gotten into the superintendent space. They've hired several either former superintendents or trainers of superintendents, so they do have a network on the ground. They have some local folks who would be helping us with the search if we went in that direction. In terms of business model, really similar to Finding Leaders in terms of their search process. Both do comprehensive in Ohio and I would say understand the local climate. OSBA, as I said, I think a challenge here is that many, many school districts, I would say probably over ninety percent of school districts in Ohio are members of OSBA. So the challenge is they will not actively recruit any sitting superintendent who is in their district. So I think we face a challenge there. The additional challenge is, if you guys read the article about Riverside this morning, they have chosen OSBA. So not only would they not be able to recruit, but they'd be using all of the same kind of strategies of publicizing, advertising, where candidates would be flowing. So I feel there, there is a challenge there, although certainly OSBA has a long history of doing searches and put together a nice proposal. We're talking about Ray &amp; Associates, GR Recruiting, HYA, which is Hazard, Young, and Tia &amp; Associates, and Mac and Jake, McPherson &amp; Jacobson. These are all national firms that would do a national search. They could, if we wanted them to partner with us and focus just on Ohio, they would not recommend that. I mean, their, their opinion is, if you're going to go with them, part of the reason you would go with them is because you want to do a national search, because you want this really robust approach. And it, it probably wouldn't make sense to, at the price points they're at and at the kind of level of advertising and the different things that are included in that, it probably wouldn't make sense to select one of these firms and then, and then say, oh, and we're just going to focus on Ohio. We'd probably be, you know, better off going with one of our local partners. As I went through here, HYA is the one I talked to today. One of the things I do want to point out is they have a really, really nice dashboard, and they have a lot of analytics. So not only can you kind of log in and see all of your candidate profiles electronically, but you can also look at analytics on their website, who is visiting your job posting, how that compares to other postings, which does give you some information about how attractive your job is. And I would say of everyone I looked at, they have a very, very, very comprehensive vetting process. Now, there would be a fee to the board of using these third-party background checks, but they are able and have experience turning up things that very often either don't appear on the internet or social media before those come up and become an issue. So I think, you know, whether we go with them or not, I think it's going to be crucial for us to do that kind of vetting and be mindful. So my opinion as we go through here, happy to answer any questions, but really I think our goal as a board tonight should be to narrow this down to ideally three firms that we would invite back to present to us, ask questions, and then evaluate. And I would say I can give you guys, depending on whether we think we want that national approach or whether we want the local approach, I could give you my top three recommendations. But I also am interested in what you guys have found, because I'm sure you've done your own research or heard recommendations and referrals from other boards as well. So I wanted to open it up before I kind of bias you all with my opinions.
Hey, I've heard good things from other districts about Finding Leaders. They came highly recommended from other board members in Ohio and they're local, so that is a plus there. But I think we should also consider national search to bring in fresh perspective, someone that doesn't really know, that might have new ideas for our district to bring it forward.
I, I agree with that, actually. That makes sense to me.
Erin?
I disagree with that one. I, I do like the local perspective of Finding Leaders. I think that the, the community has said a lot that they want to stay more local than bringing somebody from California or something else like that. That's the only, that's, that's my biggest reservation, is that I've heard more from community members that they want to try to stay more local, even if it's not somebody that like lives in, in our district. With having a local search firm, they're going to be more familiar with the things that are going on in our area. So that attracts me more, only because that's what I'm hearing from the community members. And that's the reason why we're even on this board, is because of the community members, well. Not necessarily you and I, but you know what I mean? So that's my take on the national one. But I, I agree. I think that it, oh, I do have a question for you.
Yes, please.
I think we should narrow it down to three. Question I had is the K through twelve business and the OSBA one. The amounts that you have on there, would that be covered, like the other ones up above?
No. So those are-
So we would bear all of that cost then?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, the ones, so if you look at the ESC of Western Reserve, where we're currently a member, that rate that I have in there is a discounted rate for being a member. And then the ESC of Northeast Ohio is willing to subsidize that entire fee that you see there for Finding Leaders. So while I don't think that is the sole reason we should make any decision-
Oh, no. Absolutely.
That weighs into my decision of, you know, who I might invite back and strongly give consideration to.
I would say that it might make sense, and I want to let Krista weigh in, but it might make sense just to, you know, as we've got a little bit of, you know, do we want, definitely local, do we want to consider nationals, since we'd be bringing three back, we could bring one of the national firms back. So we would have a comparison of, this is what you get with maybe a more robust national search versus local and be able to ask questions, and then also, you know, by it being in a public meeting, our community would be able to see that process and see us, you know, thoroughly consider all options and kind of make the decision. So that might be one way to address that, but I'll let Ms. Bear weigh in.
I have a lot of questions, so I'm just going to let them marinate for a minute. I want to ask Mr. Murphy and Mr. Tarnell, what are your thoughts? While I decide how many questions to ask.
I, I do like the idea of bringing in both. I understand what you mean in terms of what the community has been asking for, but, you know, when you're bringing back three, it's an opportunity to look at the whole scope of what everybody has to offer, and then you can make your decision from there. So I, I think that's the, the one thought that I would consider most is totally weighing out your options and look at the entire gamut.
Would a national firm be willing to come for a presentation?
Yep. So Ray &amp; Associates has, if anyone watched the State School Board presentation last week, Michael Collins, who was there, he, he personally would come to our meeting to present if we wanted to go with them. And then from HYA, Terry, who's, I think I linked her bio there in her name, she would be happy to come. They also have, they are a Midwest firm because they're based in Illinois. So they have several other people on the ground in Ohio, so either she could come, someone else, a couple of them. But they are interested in partnering with us and would make it work to have folks here in person to present. I, GR is, I would say, less, less interested and does not have someone specifically in Ohio, so I don't think they would come. And then, as I said, Mac and Jake, I was not able to connect with in advance of this meeting, although they did offer to connect tomorrow, so I can get some more information about whether they'd be willing to do that. Unfortunately, we're on a little bit of a tight timeline with the holidays and everything, and I wanted to bring this to your, here tonight.
So of, okay, so if we were to go with two that were local or one local, one state, and then one national, from your experience, out of the ones that you saw that were national, which one did you like the best?
I would bring HYA if I were going to bring a national. And then locally, I would bring Dan back from ESC of Western Reserve just because I think he has a, a different flavor of, you know, knowing our district and recruiting a different way, which I think would be a nice contrast. And then I'd bring Finding Leaders and the ESC of Northeast Ohio. Those would be the three that I would bring back because I think they're really kind of three different levels of search that would give us a very broad perspective. And of course, at the end of the day, we don't have to go with one of those three. We could see all three of them and do what the State School Board did and say, no, we're not deciding tonight. I, I hope we don't do that, but I don't think we're committing to any of them or locking them in, and I think that would give us a very broad picture of sort of the different avenues we could go down.
What, what did you like about HYA?
I like their vetting. I like that they do have several people, even though they're not located in Ohio, who are on the ground in Ohio and in knowledge. The person who'd be running our search, for instance, has worked in Shaker City Schools, so I think that's, you know, obviously not the same, but closer to us. I also liked their dashboard and analytics and the way they post all superintendent jobs from all search firms. So like, even if someone had listed with OSBA or Ray &amp; Associates, they have all that on their website, so then it becomes a hub on their website of, lots of candidates go there to look at a comprehensive list of postings, and they can also on the backend see that happening, and they pay close attention to that, and then sometimes recruit from those people. Many of them are similar in terms of how they, you know, kind of work with us and work with stakeholders in our community to solicit input. But I would say the technology side is, is really robust there. That's what I liked. I also liked that HYA is very concerned with our stakeholders in the community. I know that's something that's really important to us in, in multiple different avenues. I think we're going to want to involve the community at many different stages and many different capacities, whether it's through soliciting input in the beginning, through focus groups, surveys, conversations, maybe even meet and greets, town halls, those sorts of things. Those are all things whichever firm we work with is flexible on and will help us figure it out. But I would say in talking with HYA, they also, all of these local people talked about that too. But I would say of the national firms, HYA made a big deal of being able to do that and having a research department who would help us ask, put together and ask questions and really make sure we were getting kind of the numbers in terms of our feedback. So those are the things that appeal to me when I'm just comparing to national.
So I have just, I think, one question that'll drive a lot of things. Did they give length of time to complete the process, like number of weeks? And or, I know there's lots of phases. What's the average that we're looking at?
Yeah, most of them gave us timelines, so I'll just pull this one in the back, I think, because they have it. Many people were talking about, it's like blurred, yeah. Sorry, I realized it was blurred. Many people talked about doing this over a potential eight to twelve-week period. And a lot of that variability in those number of weeks is, how quickly are we going to build the initial profile, which really determines how many different stakeholders we're going to talk to. So when you're thinking about it, you know, you can talk to staff, you can talk to parents, you can talk to students. They're going to all want to talk to all of us. We're going to solicit from the community at large, and we want to give people time to do that and make sure we're getting, you know, an accurate and quality profile that prioritizes the right things built. So I think that's the difference in time, is sort of what is our availability going to be to meet with them and then come together and listen to the feedback? And how quickly are we going to be able to engage these stakeholders, both through the district and through the community into whatever format we choose? Whether it's, you know, surveys and doing them both paper and online, or actually having meetings with the different stakeholders or key groups, like, you know, everything from a district can decide to meet with PTAs and boosters and the different union groups and, you know, all of those sorts of things to, okay, well, actually we want to target people in our community who haven't been engaged before. And those groups are probably going to be harder to, you know, pull in. So a little, so a lot of the variability, I think, in that like eight to twelve weeks of the search process is going to depend on what we choose as our flavor of collaborating with the different stakeholders and how available we can all be.
Okay. I think that's one of the things, I don't, whether they're national or local or regional, is what's their process? How refined and organized are they to hit the ground running because they're going to be our guides?
Yep.
You know, so I think that's going to drive my decision-making. So I like the idea of a national search firm because I think a lot of organizations are finding in a remote or hybrid world having, you know, it used to be Northeast Ohio when you're recruiting, and to open up to the entire United States has really allowed you to, to siphon some of the best candidates from all over. I have concerns about national, not because I don't want to seek out the best and most talented person for our district. I have concerns because that person is contractually required to complete their job and relocate and get here and get up to speed and start doing their job day one. And I think that's going to be really hard for somebody out of state to do. Although if that person is truly talented, they've probably already mastered the art of doing all of this at once. So that's my concern with somebody out of the state, is you need to contractually finish whatever obligation you have at your current school district, and we want them to honor that. And at the same time, get up to speed as fast as humanly possible to get in the door here. So-
One of the things that some of these national firms talked about is, very likely when you're talking about Ohio, if we were to pull someone from another state, it would likely be because they grew up here and have roots here, or because they're specifically coming back here either for their children for some reason, whether it's for schooling or some activity, or because they have aging parents. So generally speaking, the kind of candidate they would find, it's not maybe like a New York City where someone's like, oh, I've always, you know, wanted to live there and- where someone's like, oh, I've always, you know, wanted to live there and I love Ohio and I relocated here. So I, I think everyone knows that about me. But I think they would have some kind of ties. And a big part of this process is making sure that that is all vetted and sussed out by these firms along the way. Because, you know, a lot of these candidates, if they want to work with a reputable search firm to find a job, even if it's not in Willoughby Eastlake, if they are going to be misrepresenting themselves or at the 11th hour saying, oh, well, I was just kind of doing this and I won't really move, that is really going to burn a lot of bridges for them down the road. So I do think that is part of it, but like all of you have said, I certainly don't think that we can find someone who doesn't understand our community. I think that is something I've heard all of us say is going to be key. So I don't, I don't know what the likelihood is that we're going to find that perfect person out there who maybe grew up here and went to one of our high schools and then moved somewhere else and really, really wants to come back and.
Yeah.
Right, that, that candidate, I mean, it may turn out that that particular candidate is not available.
Right.
So, I mean, that's hard, it's hard to know for sure on that.
Right. Another thing that we can do is if we brought a national firm back and even if we didn't go with them, what we could do is hold some of these local options to that standard and say, is your process as rigorous? Will you do the same level of vetting, checking? Do you have a system for this? How actively will you recruit? What are your advertising strategies versus this and sort of use it as a benchmark? Not saying we wouldn't seriously consider them because if the benchmark is here and then someone else is here, then, then we need to decide based on that. But if we're saying all things equal and these processes are all the same, then maybe the tipping point is that, you know, local factor.
I have a question. That's really important to me. To advertise, we can pay for something on Indeed. Like, we don't need an advertising place to post things. Which one of these do you feel has the most robust recruiting practices to go out and say, this person meets all of the check marks in the box and they have a job, they've not applied, but we know that they should be interested. Who does that?
Yeah, I would say in Ohio, K-12 and Finding Leaders have very similar processes that do that. Finding Leaders is run by former superintendents. K-12 is run by treasurers and kind of on the ground superintendents. They both would call each other their biggest competitors. And both of them told me if we didn't go with them, we should go with the other one. So I would say Finding Leaders is in independents. K-12 is more in Southern Ohio. My personal opinion is since this is a superintendent search, I would probably go with Finding Leaders because they're closer. The other benefit there, and, you know, I think this matters, is that partnering with the ESC of Northeast Ohio, we've got some, we've got a parent in, in our district who grew up and went to, I can't remember whether she said north or south, went to one of our high schools, who would be partnering. And I think would help provide even more of that local flavor. Not that I didn't think K-12 was great, I did. But when I weigh in the cost difference, the local factor, that's, that's where I say I would bring them back. Now, if we weren't going to bring a national firm, I would say I would also bring K-12 back and compare the two of them. I think in terms of the, the side of knowing our district, really being keyed into Lake County, I think that's where ESC of Western Reserve comes in and Dan Wilson. And that's why I would bring him back to compare that. Do I think he has as much of a nature of actively going out and saying, oh, I'm going to call you and call you and call you until you call me back? Probably not, but does he know a lot of the right people and will be able to really suss out who's a fit for us? I think that's something to consider. So that's, that's where that recommendation comes from of saying, consider inviting them back.
This is just my perspective. I feel that the next superintendent has to have experiences as a superintendent. I would like to see some level of portfolio of, of positive experience in the domains that we as a board determine to be the most important. And I, I feel like that's going to require, if you're in a good district, it's going to be hard to get that person to consider to applying elsewhere. So we've got, I think we're going to have to go out and find that person more than we're going to have that person applying. I don't, I don't know why, I just, I feel like we're going to have to make a case to come and apply to our district.
I agree, I agree.
So.
People are not just out there if they're happy in their jobs, doing a good job, their community loves them, their board loves them. They're not like, oh, just for fun tonight, I'm going to go look for a job. However, you know, for the right person, especially, you know, I, I can't remember who summarized this for me, but in terms of size of districts, we're at a point where someone who has been a sitting superintendent could be interested based on the size and the complexity of our district. It would make sense for them to come here as a step in their career. But that's going to be if someone calls and presents it to them and tells them, here, X, Y, Z, what we're looking for, we've noticed you've done X, Y, Z in your career. Will you take a look at this and entertain a conversation? I think that's going to be an essential part of this. So I don't think we can rely on, hey, we're going to post this on a website and people are just going to apply.
That, that's one reason I kind of like the idea of at least listening to a national firm.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think they may have that ability to maybe bring someone like that in perhaps.
And I don't know if we ever fully finished listening to Mr. Ternello and Mr. Murphy when we asked for their insight. I think we like got so sidetracked after Mr. Ternello said one thing. So I really apologize and just realized that and wanted to come back to you guys.
Do you have more than one thing?
I like the local, state and national approach. So I think that's a, a good dynamic so you can get all three levels at, for a presentation.
And I would add that I, when you mentioned both ESC of Western Reserve and Finding Leaders in conjunction with the national, leveraging the two ESCs that know our district really well, I, I think makes a lot of sense and really, you know, gives us that local angle that I know our community wants and I think is important. And then you, you also have the national, so it gives you the best of all worlds as far as I can tell.
So it sounds like there's a consensus kind of to do that approach? So would that be then Finding Leaders, ESC Western Reserve, and then you recommended HYA?
Yeah, and the other one I would, if someone had a strong opinion, I also thought Ray and Associates was great. One of the reasons I even reached out to them in addition to, they actively knew our search was there. They came to us and I had also seen them present to the State School Board. And in my opinion, they had the top presentation that I saw of, of those three. So I did really like them and, and I thought the person I talked with over there was great. But I liked the data analytics and the stronger kind of emphasis on community engagement, stakeholder engagement and ability to have a whole department as well as vetting of HYA. And that's what tipped me and it was really a couple hours ago, as you guys know, because that's when I got the proposal in.
Well, and HYA currently has on their website only one, two, three, four, five, six active superintendent searches that they're working on and none of them are in our area. I kind of like that that's there.
That's a positive.
It is, like, no, no, not that it's not competition, but they're, we're not saturated in the same market as another client.
Yeah, and they do have more than, you know, Ray and Associates, the president of their company is from Columbus and is out here and he has, you know, served on school boards as well as the State School Board before. He's really the one person that they mentioned in Ohio, whereas HYA seems to have more boots on the ground in Ohio and kind of more of a team. Although we'd be assigned really two, maybe three key people that we'd be primarily liaising with. But that doesn't mean through word of mouth and networking that they wouldn't have a wider network.
So a question that I have, I don't know if it's a question or a concern. With ESC, they're not necessarily a, a research or recruiting firm.
Correct.
Whereas the other ones that you have listed, what would, why would you prefer ESC over like K through 12?
You're saying ESC of Western Reserve?
Yes.
Well, so I do know that they've done other search work for us if I'm not speaking incorrectly. And I do think, you know, Dan has a lot of kind of local knowledge, network connection. Like, he worked in Manner for many years. So I think it would just be a nice comparison of, are we trying to do this through networking, through someone who intimately already knows our district and can really help us with their own perspective of elaborate what we want to do versus are we having someone come in and help us truly with us and our stakeholders kind of build that profile and then go out and actively, I used to call this in my old life, like headhunt and call people and find those people. And I think having a comparison of really these three unique approaches, I think would give us the broadest perspective. But if you're asking me, do I think it would be better to have someone who has a more probably defined process and calls themselves a search firm and actively recruits? Yes, that's my gut feeling, but I think to be fair to all of us and fair to the community and also acknowledging the relationship that we have, that it would make sense to contrast the three.
So the ESC of the Western Reserve would have the great local networking, but not as robust of a vetting process?
Correct, and you can see that just even in the style of the proposal, right? And, you know, one of the things on there I will note is, you know, while community stakeholder engagement is part of it and can be offered, that is not included in the initial fee structure. So as you look through, it's not a lot extra. It's, you know, we're talking about a pretty minimal extra investment. But the fact that it's not, you know, a kind of every single time this is exactly what they do, gives me a little pause to say, all right, will some of these other places have a really robust way of soliciting feedback from our community, which I know we've all said is really important to us? It doesn't mean it's not possible. It just means, is it documented, been done 50 times before sort of thing?
The vetting process is also very important. So that's a concern of mine with a firm that doesn't have as robust vetting process as some of the other ones.
I think the, you know, I was just thinking to myself, there's been, you know, it goes back to the question I asked at the last meeting. What if there's a sitting superintendent who's local, who's very interested? You know, they don't want to risk their current role. You know, the ESC of Western Reserve, Dan's going to have those networks where he can have those soft conversations with local superintendents where they can feel like, where confidentiality and trust is there. Like, they already have a rapport that doesn't necessarily exist with other firms. I'm not saying that's a reason to go with them, but I know there may be local superintendents with the experience. Maybe they check our box, maybe they don't, who could be interested. But, you know, they risk a lot by throwing an application in there. And, you know, that would be, I think that's where Dan, anybody locally would kind of add that because they have those relationships and connections. At the same time, I agree, the vetting process is going to be extremely important.
Just like that article you sent us where that one person was selected and then because of the vetting process failing, what had happened? So that is a big concern.
I think no matter what, I, I guess this is just me being really conservative, but whoever we choose, I do not think we can ultimately at the end of the day say, oh, the search firm said they're vetted. I think we have to as a board.
Have to do our due diligence.
I mean, it's our responsibility to put this person in the seat. And so it's going to be our responsibility to do our own due diligence as well on top of it. It doesn't mean we shouldn't pick someone with good vetting. It just means I don't think we can say, oh, well, we think they're going to do a good job. We have to do, do a very rigorous job as we're getting closer to the, you know. Most of these places say, okay, do an initial screening after the applications, bring to the board maybe somewhere between eight and 10 people that we would then have like a first round of interview with and then bring back either two to four, most say three, but I've heard anywhere from two to four for those final rounds where then that's when you start getting the community involved, doing longer sessions, getting different stakeholder groups as well. And I would say before we're getting down to that like two to four stage is when we should be rigorously looking at these people because we don't want to invest all this time, put someone in front of the community who we're not seriously considering or able to consider.
So Finding Leaders is a private firm, so we don't have to worry about any cross-competition with member recruitment. So they would be free and clear to recruit and go after 100% of whomever?
Yes, that's what they have said and we can verify that if we were to bring them back.
I think that's the thing that I'm looking at, whomever we have that is local or has membership restrictions, I would like in a presentation for them to list specifically which schools they are prohibited from soliciting from so that we can truly look at how are they narrowed down within local searches or recruiting? I'm okay with Finding Leaders of ESC of Northeast Ohio. I think they offer the best and they're local. Now, this might be more, this may not be a bit more of a knicker, chuck question. Are we using flow-through funds as a part of our membership? Is that what it is? So when we're being, it says here that the fees are what they are, the expenses are, but then a portion of it's paid through our membership. What does that mean?
You have to align with an ESC, it's required by law. And they get funding based on us being aligned with them. So that, I'm assuming, I haven't seen any proposal or anything official on how that they're paying for it, but I'm assuming it would be some of that alignment fee that they get from the state of Ohio.
Okay. And then all the other stuff, Nick, how would we be funding this search? How would we pay for it when it is out of the district's pocket directly?
General fund.
Just a general fund. And for budgeting for expense, I mean, we're as low as 5,000, as high as, you know, 18 plus expenses. What's your recommendation for expense for reasonable cost?
Well, I think this could definitely be very costly, a lot more costly than even $18,000 if you made the wrong decision. So I, while it is good that you are cognizant of the dollar amount, I think you have to be comfortable in whichever search that you select.
Yeah. I think that's, so the plus expenses or the hourly, what does that mean?
So that would mean in many of these, it's sort of if we have someone who's traveling, right? So if they're not primarily located in Ohio and they're traveling up here, there are certain advertising expenses when they're saying advertise on this network. Some of them are suggesting, don't just do online surveys, but survey the community through, whether it's paper costs or hosting forums where they would say, you should get snacks and drinks for people and bring them in. So it's basically they're saying nothing, they're not going to fund it out of their pocket. Like, this includes their work hours and time. Other than, I will say, the ESC of Western Reserve, because that was like a very specific list of what's included and then there was an hourly rate over those outlined fees, including stakeholder groups. But any of the other ones that said expenses, it was like printing, advertising, cost to do, forums, travel expenses, if we needed someone who is not located here to come here. And then also presumably candidate travel expenses. So the more national candidates we look at, the higher the fees would be to bring them here.
Okay. I think that's just one thing I wanted to understand.
Some of them suggest also like bringing their spouses and having dinner. Again, the farther we're asking them to come and, and whether we're asking them to relocate from somewhere, the higher the expenses on the candidate side would be. And again, those are not funded by the search firm, they're funded by us.
What other questions do we have? And I just want to say thank you very much for doing all the legwork and putting this together for us and becoming our resident expert. Truly appreciated.
You are welcome. Many of them also, I will tell you, have recommended that we would have a liaison to the search firm, whoever we select after. So that's something we can decide after we have a search firm. I am happy and willing, that's in fact why I said I am not volunteering for another.
She's volunteering for this.
But I'm happy to do it, but I also, first of all, we could have two board members doing it per our policies.
Yep.
And second of all, I'm not trying to usurp it from anyone. So I would love to have more company if people want that or if you guys don't feel like I'm representing accurately, like someone else could take it over. I just wanted to make it clear that I'm not making any executive decisions.
Did HYA say anything at all about any expected expenses or costs or anything?
Yeah, well, they were just saying, and again, this showed me that they do want our business and would be happy to work with us, they would match any of these other national search firms is, you know, they'll match any competitive bid. So we would still have to pay the expenses, but as long as we can show them, hey, because I wasn't going to share another firm's proposal with them when we didn't even know which direction we were going. But they said, you know, we'll, we'll match it. They said, we'll put together a custom proposal for you, we'll give you a price. But if someone comes in under us, we'll match anyone who is going to give you comparable service. So they would give us a proposal with their price and if it ended up being lower, great. And if we can show them someone else was doing comparable, including, for instance, if they came back with a formal proposal with a price and we could show them K-12, for example, and say they were doing all of these things, they would match the price for those services. So they were willing to be competitive, although no one's subsidizing them. So they're not going to match the Finding Leaders cost.
Fair enough. Do we want to discuss narrowing down? And then we can dive in and do more research and send our questions, you know, things that we would like the proposals. Whoever we choose, we would then say, hey, Jamie, we really want this. Make sure that they're covering this when they come. Do we want to go to that next step or do we need more discussion? Okay. So do we just want to do it by virtue of majority? So we can just each say the ones that we think or do you want to just, how do you want to do this?
It sounded like several of us like the Finding Leaders.
Okay, one down, two to go. Okay. Anybody against HYA? Okay, two down, number three.
This is where I could go with the majority of, I would say the third one should either be ESC of Western Reserve or K-12. Those, that would be the two local ones.
Can we go with four and then narrow it down to three after we have some time to look at this?
We kind of have to take action like yesterday.
Yeah, it would be good if we could, if I could leave here and tomorrow invite these three and tell them you're presenting and I'm gonna get you more details on specific questions that you maybe asked for points to cover. That would be ideal, but are you deciding between the same two, Erin, that I just said?
ESC and K-12?
We could add an extra 20 minutes to the meeting.
Yeah, I mean, we could invite, we could invite four back. I do, maybe our administrators want to weigh in with the, I don't want to put you guys on the spot, but if you have a strong opinion, one way or the other.
Who's gonna go first? You're both like waiting.
Let me, let me say one, one other thing then, I guess. The reason why I am kind of leaning more through K through 12 is both of those guys are are still Ohio-based, Northeast Ohio. Even when we do select these three, we're still gonna have our input that's gonna go into this. We know the district is also, and so I'm leaning more towards K-12 than I am ESC. Not that I have anything against ESC of Western Reserve, but if, I I think that because they're going to be doing a lot more of the legwork than what ESC of Western Reserve, they're gonna be able to help us find the best candidates, I think, better than ESC of Western Reserve is gonna do.
I would probably go with K-12 or ESC as well.
I love the ESC of Western Reserve. They've done a lot for us, but I need somebody who can do this, execute it seamlessly like it's back of their hand. So I think K-12 is probably the better. We we don't have time to burn right now for them to figure out.
We could have both, but K-12's proposal and process looks very detailed and thorough, as far as I can tell.
Sounds like we got, uh,
All right.
K through 12 then.
Okay, so it's Finding Leaders, HYA, and K-12. Good? So now what do you need from us to support your ability to prepare them to present for us?
If we can look briefly at, Mr. Chernello, did you print out the rating scale in here?
Yes.
Yes, we have that. Okay, yep. If you guys want to look at this, I think we can work backwards with our questions. So essentially, I just went through and these were things that I thought I would want to evaluate them on and give a numerical scale of one to five at the end so that we could, instead of doing what we did here where we're kind of weighed in on opinion, we could have a numerical scale and then obviously gut check it at the end. So here are the criteria I said. Understanding of and familiarity with the Willoughby Eastlake School District. Established process to develop a candidate profile that aligns with the needs of the Willoughby Eastlake School District. Ability to engage stakeholders, including the board, community, staff, students, and parents in the search. Methods to service candidates that specifically align with the desired qualifications and characteristics. Proven interview process that is both comprehensive and efficient. Conducts vetting, reference, and background checks to avoid any surprises. Adds value to the contract design and negotiation process. Supports a smooth transition and successful completion of duties after a candidate is placed. So those were the things that seemed important to me and I thought we could likely differentiate on after in-depth presentations. But I would love with a fresh pair of eyes for you guys to say whether you think any of these is eight irrelevant or something is greatly missing.
Can we put communication frequency and method so we know what to expect from them so we can hold them accountable?
Between our board and the search firm.
Yeah. And I I think too, I want those terms outlined in a contract. Whenever I work with a subcontractor, it's if you don't meet the expected or expected timeframes and there's a cost reduction based upon their performance and then providing evidence for meeting the need of that, you know, expectation. I think that's something that's definitely needs to be in there because we need them to really drive it.
Okay. And then you also wanted to know if there will be any limitations. And these firms can speak to as well because even though they're not going to be prohibited by membership, they do guarantee that there is, all of them have different criteria, but a certain amount of time that they would not go back and what I'll call poach a candidate that they place. So if they had placed Mr. Murphy, they would not call him within, depending on the timeline, one, two, three years. But it's important to probably know what that scope is in Ohio, which would be different for a local firm versus a national. So limitations on recruiting from schools.
That's fairly ethical. I think that would be a good business practice.
Yes. And then there are, and I can make sure they call this out, guarantees. So many of them say, okay, well, we'll guarantee your search. So hopefully we're not in this situation, someone doesn't work out X duration of time. Then they would either do the search, redo it for free, they would do it expenses only. And they have different criteria, so we could have them spell those things out.
Now, will they work on the legal, legal language for the contract for us? Or is that something we work with our legal as additional cost?
They could bring a contract in legal language, although I would say we would want to review that. So I can request, and I I haven't really addressed that with them, but I could request a proposed contract and then I don't know what our next step from there would be, who would be the best person to look it over.
Probably our legal counsel that helps with our reviews and other contracts, I would assume. And then also be in line with the practices and precedents set by the district as well.
So I I'm not sure if any, if they will, when they're in the proposal process, give us that. They might be able to give us like a sample language and I don't know if it's worth sending that to our lawyer or if we would, you know, essentially have the presentations, know which direction we're going, saying, we're likely going with you, please provide us contract, and then we would vote in a subsequent meeting.
What I've heard from others who've done the search is that when you get to the point where you're actually, you've offered and you're negotiating the contract terms, it's usually that person's attorney with our attorney.
Yeah, and I think that would be when we get down to one and we would say, okay, well, we're not gonna vote and sign until we hammer out these terms, but you are our desired firm because it's a lot, I think, to do with three different firms simultaneously.
Okay, I'm good.
Any other questions or anything else you want me to address other than coordinating and then adding these couple of things? Okay, are you guys okay if I invite them to our January 9?
We need it.
Okay, great. And are you okay if I tell them they can have up to 30 minutes, but that they need to reserve at least 10 minutes for questions, if not more? So that they would have, you know, 15 to 20 minutes to present and then attendance for our questions? Or would you prefer that we keep the questions shorter and the time shorter?
So looking at the January agenda, knowing that we're gonna have two meetings in January, can you both maybe reflect on what needs to be handled in that first organizational meeting? You know, estimate pacing and time and then give a recommendation for length for them? I mean, we don't want to be here till 11, but we have to, we will. But then how much could we then defer to the second meeting just to cut the time?
I don't think we have any reports. So you have your standard organizational agenda items that you have to do. Those don't take very long. And everything else would probably be relatively routine, agenda items, you know, monthly financials, stuff like that on, in my section. You probably have just pretty standard monthly things. I mean, those shouldn't go very long. I think the things that normally go long at our board meetings are board discussion and reports. So I guess it would really depend on how long your board discussion is.
We have no board discussion besides this then, right? Like, this this has to be priority. Fair, and if there's anything it needs reporting out on, we'll defer that to the second meeting in January. So 30 minutes then, so it'd be 90 minutes for presentations.
And that would include our questions in there. So I'm gonna tell them, you know, obviously, yeah, try to cover as much of this in your 15 to 20 minutes and then we'll have 10 minutes and it's a pro if you don't take your whole time and you can still get your point across.
So do we want to place that right at the beginning of the meeting? So that if if individuals from the community want to come, they can just sit through it and then sound good? Okay, so it'd have to be obviously all the organizational stuff first, then presentations, then routine business. Good?
Yep, and just to confirm, Finding Leaders, HYA, K-12 are the ones that I'm inviting back for January 9 and we're starting 7:00 PM, so I'll have them.
Does it have to start at 7? Or do you want to start early?
It doesn't have to start at 7, but that's our typical time. Do we want to amend the time to?
Do we need to do the vote, the organizational voting first? Would it make sense to start a little earlier so we can do that?
I think, I I think we should start at 6. This is, this is, like you said, someone, this is probably the most important thing we're gonna have coming up here. So I say we start at 6 and that way if we do run over, I mean, it's not like we've never ran over before.
We will always. So 6 o'clock then? Because we can get through the routine stuff probably in what, a half hour, 40 minutes?
Yeah, we could notify the media and tell them 6 o'clock.
Did you already notify the media?
I don't think so. I mean, I know at the last board meeting you put the notification with 7 o'clock, but there was no official board action or notification after that.
When we voted on the organizational meeting, you're saying it was 7?
You always say the next meeting will be this day, this time.
Okay.
So I mean, we can say 6 o'clock and just notify the media. And then the tax budget hearing will be 15 minutes before, but you guys don't really have to be there.
I think also too, this might be an opportunity to notify our community formally that we are beginning the process. Does it make sense to send something to our entire, all of our parents, all of our staff? Like, hey, this is the first meeting. If somebody's truly wanting to be interested, they know that we're looking at firms that day. I don't know, I feel like this should be like, yeah, like an email to everybody. Hey, by the way, this not only is it the organizational meeting, it's gonna be at 6 o'clock, but we're starting our search and if you're really interested and I feel like we should talk to our mayoral counterparts and see if they can get it on their distribution. So everybody knows that it's beginning and if they want to be involved and partake and present, they can, right from the beginning. What do you think?
Yeah, I think it would be good for the community to see that the due diligence we're doing and see the different options we have and feel like they're getting insight into the process, especially because we are weighing the stakeholder involvement heavily in our decision. I think that is something we want to let people know and have access to.
And then those that do attend or participate or, you know, like our staff, our community members, Mr. Foreman, who's at every meeting, have time to send us an email, hey, this is what I'm thinking. This is a great idea. Do you consider this before we formally make a decision as a board? Right? Because we don't have any community feedback at this point, really. So it might be an opportunity to at least receive some in the decision-making of the vendor we choose.
Are we making a decision that evening?
It would be great if we could make a decision. I think we'd have to vote on the contract in the second meeting, but if we made a decision, most of these firms in good faith would start collaborating with us and start the process of involving us and the stakeholders, knowing that we're just hammering out a contract. So the ideal situation would be if after board discussion, we say, we're going with this firm.
Okay.
But with that said, we just announced who we're looking at and they're going to be on the agenda and we can probably even include in the agenda that maybe the proposals or presentations or something. So people could give us feedback in advance and look at the information or have questions, submit questions if they wanted us to clarify something, I guess, and we could choose to do that.
So just ask them to send the proposal in advance so it can be included in the agenda. Would that be okay? Yeah, that's what I meant.
And if it's close, that gives us enough time for Nick and Chuck to get a ring set up on the second floor. So the final two can help with that.
I'm gonna abstain from that portion of the meeting.
No sanctioned Fight Clubs on district property. With that, I think that we're we're pretty well set then to move forward. Okay, any other discussion about the superintendent search initial strategy design session? Okay, with that, we'll move on to item 4A, closing adjournment. Do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Madam President, I move to adjourn.
Thank you. Ms. Schatzman, do I hear a second?
I'll second that.
Wonderful. We wish you all, we wish you all a wonderful holiday and look forward to engaging with you in the new year. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Eady?
Yes.
Mr. Oskus?
Yes.
Mrs. Schatzman?
Yes.
Mrs. Menser?
Yes.
Mrs. Bear?
Yes.
You're adjourned at 8:15 PM?